To the June 5th meeting of Lower Providence Township Board of Supervisors. If you could please all rise and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a ready and justice for all.
Okay, Deb, could you call the order, please, first?
Absolutely. Sekman.
Here.
Mr. Sergini.
Here.
Mr. Duffy.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mrs. Zimmerman.
Here. Okay, before this evening's meeting, the board held their regular executive session and we discussed legal and personnel matters. All right, with that, moving on. First item is the consent agenda. And with that, would someone like to entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none, questions from the audience? Hearing none, all those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, motion carried. Okay, item two, this evening, we have a public hearing. This will be a conditional use hearing, and our solicitor, John Reis, will handle this.
Mrs. Sparrango, are you here? Okay. While you're coming up, let me just explain what the conditional use hearing is. What's in front of the board tonight is a conditional use hearing. It's much like a zoning hearing board hearing. And it's been publicly advertised for a hearing. This involves some previous approvals that were given by the township for 220 Summit Avenue, major subdivision, is how it's described. I'm going to mark some, this is going to be very short, as you'll be glad to know, a very short hearing. Mrs. Sparrango, do you have any other witnesses other than yourself?
No.
Okay. But when I have you sworn in a minute, I just want to explain where we're going with this. There are three prior decisions by this township involving this property. This is an 11.1 acre property. It's parcel number 43-00-14029-13. This property was approved in August 2006 by conditional use plan application at that time, and again, tonight is Sparrango Wartister Associates LP. That was subject to six conditions at that time in that order. So that conditional use decision, I'm going to mark as a board exhibit B1. We then had a final plan approval resolution of the subdivision, major subdivision plan by the township, which was resolution number 08-79. That was approved on June 19th, 2008. And that, in addition to the conditional use decision, approved plans that were filed at that time were approved by the township's consultants, and I'm going to mark that as board exhibit B2. Final document I'll mark is the resolution, which is 2014-24. This is a revised final plan approval resolution of the same subdivision plan, which eliminated from that subdivision plan the requirement for an eight-foot paved walking trail. There was a modification on that plan that granite curbing would be replaced with concrete curbing. It required the submission of a conditional use amendment revision, which is why we're here tonight. It also requires that a revised final plan be submitted, signed off on by all the parties. And it also requires that the applicant reimburse the township for any of its professional fees related to the subdivision plan or the conditional use approval. So that's the background. That resolution, I'm going to mark as board exhibit B3. And if we can have Mrs. Sparrango sworn in.
Yes, I do. Mary Grace Sparrango, A-R-A-N-G-O.
Okay, Mrs. Sparrango, this is a very simple hearing tonight because I think most of the heavy lifting's been done on the revised plan. Do you have anything you want to add, why you want to revise the plan beyond what you've said in the past, just for the record tonight?
Basically reiterating what I've said. I was hoping for some relief to reduce some of the site costs on the site so that we could move forward on the project. And one was, it's only an eight lot subdivision with only eight homes in the homeowners association. I thought it was very taxing for those homeowners to absorb some of the liability that that path might have for them. And those are concerns. The other thing was granite curbing's very expensive, and most of the curbing in that neighborhood is concrete, with the exception of the school. And we were hoping to continue with the neighborhood, the concrete curb, to also reduce some site costs.
Okay. And the board's already approved that as part of the subdivision plan?
I appreciate that.
Just, the board may have some questions of you, too. What is your plan, assuming, you know, they vote to approve this tonight, you follow through with the rest of the administration, it's got to be done. Do you plan on building this soon?
We hope so. Financing is the issue these days, so hoping by reducing some of the site costs, you know, it'll be more attractive and...
Would it be this year, next year?
I don't know if it'll be this year.
Okay.
We'd like to, so we would really like to start it this year.
Okay. Okay. I don't really have any other questions. We've been through this once. Does the board have any questions for Mrs. Sparrango?
No.
Any public comment on this application? Sarah, come on up and go to the mic. And your address, Sarah?
80 Smith Road, Collegeville, which is in Lower Providence.
Do you have questions for Mrs. Sparrango?
I have no question. I own all the property behind this, all the woods. I'm really here, she doesn't know it, but I'm here to defend the two things that they want to do. Number one, the eight-foot path through that woods doesn't make much sense. It also ruins the structure of the woods. My wood attaches, I don't care who walks on my property, their property, as long as they don't throw their trash on my side. So I don't see any reason for that. As far as the curbs, I know they're beautiful, but they got, I know they're expensive, and I think they're also, the snowplow's got to play heckle on them. So I'm just here to let you know that I...
So you're in favor of the application?
I'm in favor of the two things they want to do.
Great.
And I have a wife who's on surgery today, and I got to get home before I get a phone call.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Sarah, come on up.
Harold Burton, 153 Summit Avenue.
Is that your pardon?
B-U-R-T-O-N. My question is, on this notice, you have 220 Summit Avenue. That's not part of the property. That's Mascara's house next door, and I just wondered why that's on there? Why this property is listed as 220?
That's the name of the subdivision plan, that's the name of the plan since 2006.
Has nothing to do with it, though, at this point.
Okay. Do we have the right tax parcel number?
What's that?
How about the, do we have the right tax parcel number?
All right.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for you, but that's the way this plan's been carried, I think, since 2006, and it's been described as, is that correct, Mrs. Sparrango?
Yeah, that's how it's always been labeled. It was part of that original parcel at one time.
Okay, maybe that's why.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. No other questions? I would say that this hearing is closed, and what's before the board then is a motion to approve the conditional use application of Sparrango Wartister Associates LP, subject to the same conditions that are in your resolution number 2014-24.
Okay, thank you, John. All right, so would one of the board members like to make a motion to approve the conditional use application we have for us?
I would make a motion to approve the conditional use application.
Second? Do you have a motion and a second?
I was waiting for it.
Do we have any questions from board members? Any more questions from the audience before we take a vote? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, motion carried.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Mrs. Sparrango, you'll receive a written decision, which will be similar to the resolution previously.
Okay.
Within 45 days of tonight.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item three, new business. Three A, discussion and consideration of disposition of records resolution. Sue Law, take over.
Thank you. Lower Providence Township follows the records retention and disposition schedule as set forth in the municipal records manual issued by the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission. The resolution before you details records that are eligible for destruction in accordance with the guidelines of the schedule. The procedure for the actual disposition involves identifying the records that were to be destroyed and having the board concur with the request by means of adopting a resolution. So I'm requesting that you approve the resolution for the destruction of the records listed.
Thank you, Sue. And in our packet, we have a full list of the documents that are in this resolution that are to be disposed of. Can I, would someone like to entertain a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
You have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have any questions from the board? Questions from the audience? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, the ayes have it. Okay, item 3B, discussion and consideration of award of road reconstruction bid. Hi, Tim.
Good evening. Thank you. I guess I made a recommendation to the board based upon the idyllic for road work this summer in our community. Recall that we're looking at four roads to complete this summer. It was Rittenhouse Road, Church Road, Crawford Road, and Surrey Lane. We had some initial budget estimates for these projects and arrived at a value of approximately $683,000, in that range, $92,000. We've got good prices for some good contractors. The total value of the bids came in at $727,000, but as I described in my memo, embedded in our bid form was about $80,000 of additional wearing course overlaying of running and correction of gray crops that might arise out there. We don't have the spectrum to utilize all that money that is in the bid form. So using that as an analysis, we suspect that our number of 693-160, that was our budget estimate, will be actually below our actual project cost. So we have two scopes of work that we bid, recycling road restoration portion, scope A of the contract, and then the final wearing course overlay with scope B of the contract. The bid documents allowed contractors to bid on scope A, scope B, or both. No contractor bid on both scopes at work. We had a single bidder for the recycling contract, E.J. Brenneman. John, in my memo, I described that this is kind of a specialty contract work. We did have three companies come to event for a pre-bid meeting, but only one contractor bid. I compared the bid prices that were presented to Lower Providence Township against other unit pricing in other communities for the same type of work, and I find that we're right in the ballpark with other communities. So I'm suggesting that the board consider awarding E.J. Brenneman recycling the portion scope A of our contract for our wearing course overlay. We had five bidders. Alan Myers and Horshester was the low bidding contractor, and again, he didn't write the bid on our budget estimates. So if the board was so inclined, I would make that recommendation to you tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. All right, so I do have a few questions for you. So when you say, put the bid out and for the, for the lower layer, right, you only had one contractor return a bid?
Correct.
And so you said this is a more unique process that you are put out to bid?
Correct.
And could you give us a little more insight to that and the reasons why you're going about looking for that?
The process, recall that we believe that the subbase of the road is pretty bad shape, is deteriorated, to the extent that we don't feel just paving over top of that subbase is proved. We're repairing the wearing course in months or years as opposed to 20, 25-year lifespan that we might otherwise expect. So one of the processes that we have used in Lower Providence for many years is coal mill recycling, and it is a large train of vehicles where there's a big mill. It mills up the road to approximately six inches in depth. It takes that mill material, puts it into a hopper, where it's blended with new asphalt and other mulcers. It's put into a paving machine and respread on the roadway and compact. So then we get a new six-inch subbase of road bed. And there's only a couple of contractors in the area that have the equipment, the manpower, and the knowledge to do that work. And E.J. Brenneman has been one of the contractors at the lead of this process. They've worked for Lower Providence Township a number of times in the past with very good results, and for that reason, I believe that they are good contractors.
Thank you, Tim. Originally, in last year's budget, we had decided we were going to be doing two roads this year, right, Rich? We were, we were counting on Rittenhouse Road, not even the full Rittenhouse Road, and then the other one was, I guess, Level? Is it Level?
Yeah, I think that's correct.
So over our wonderful winter that we had sped up the process of the...
We got some new applicants.
Yes.
We got Crawford, and we got Church, and we got Surrey Lane after the winter. And they were in deplorable condition, so we added those three. And we originally budgeted $250,000, and we estimated that with the addition of those three roads, it would be $693,000. And as Tim and I have worked together on the numbers, Tim is satisfied that we're still within the estimate of $693,000 for 2014.
Okay, excellent. And so as soon as we would approve these, if we approve these bids tonight, you would begin that work in the next 30 days or so?
Yeah, that's correct. We hope to get all of them before school starts, so we put some pretty tight time constraints in the bid documents, and we discussed that thoroughly with all the bidders, and they fully believe that they can get in before it's done this summer and be completed before school starts.
Excellent, okay. Sounds like you covered it all. Thank you, Tim. Any questions from board members?
That was mine, timeline, so.
Sorry, still...
No, I'm good.
Questions from the audience? Yes, Kathy, come on up.
Kathy Meyer, Arcola. I know our road has been put on the back burner, the lower part of it, you know, first was the possible of a pump station, and then now the bridge, but it's getting really bad. And I didn't know if maybe there was some way we could squeeze in, maybe not a full, you know, redo, but something, you know, that you could temporarily make it a little better? I know you addressed a pothole that we had in this bad weather back before, and it was huge, it was almost like a sinkhole in the road. They did refill it, but it's all choppy, and so I don't know if there's any room for that budget, but I appreciate it.
John, you could probably add some to that, but what we're expecting, Kathy, is with the Arcola Road Bridge replacement, which in every two weeks, we're having these meetings, the shovel should be in the ground, we're told, right, October?
Yes.
October?
October.
So we know that there'll be a tremendous amount of truck traffic...
Right.
...up and down Level and Arcola, and so, of course, we don't want to, you know, invest in the roadway and then have it then, you know, have some trucks up and down it. But is there some way we can maybe do some temporary repairs to...
Yeah, we'll look at it. Yeah, because with the truck on that the condition it is, it might get really, really bad if we don't do something. But I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions from the audience? All right, hearing none. We will, would a board member like to entertain a motion to award this road reconstruction bid? The first one would be for the subbase to go to E.J. Brenneman, and the wearing course to go to Alan Myers, right?
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. You have any questions?
No.
Questions from the audience? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, motion carried. Okay, now we'll move on to how we're going to pay for this. Item 3C, discussion and consideration of financing recommendation for the road reconstruction projects. Jerry?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. If you recall, back on the May 15th Board of Supervisors meeting, Rich and I gave a general overview of the financing proposals we had received on the road projects. And at that time, we had requested that the board put off a decision on selecting a financial institution until the road, the road bids were awarded. And you can see, it was more of an interactive discussion tonight, so there was a good reason for it, and the numbers came in very close to what we expected with that additional $82,000 in there. But, so when I, and that would be the reason for any wording that I use going forward where I'm saying approximately, because it's not that we will not nail it down to an exact dollar when we finance, but right now, we're going to tweak the proposals with the numbers that we'll absolutely need based on Tim's information. At that time, though, we had the various financial institutions that provided the quotes. It was Quakertown National Bank, First Niagara, PIB loan wasn't an option, but at that time, we determined that Delaware Valley Regional Financing Authority had provided the best interest rates with the best term for us. Lucian Calhoun of Dalval is here tonight because his organization, excuse me, his institution had provided the most varied types of proposals. So he's here to speak as a subject matter expert on that. I'll turn it over to Lucian, and then I'll get back to my memo and information.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The proposals that we sent were for a 10-year term, leveled debt, and we proposed either a fixed rate for 10 years with no option to prepay, or an option to prepay with no penalty after five years. The option to prepay after five years would increase the interest rate on the loan by eight to 10 basis points, .8, .08 to .1 percent. Without an option, the rate would be approximately 2.08 percent. With an option, would be approximately 2.18 percent. The option would be significant if the board believes that rates may go down in the future, and it would facilitate doing a refunding of the loan at a lower interest rate, or if the board believed it would have funds available to prepay the loan, and wanted to be assured that there would be no prepayment penalty. The township would always have the option to prepay, but, you know, for example, if, you know, we lock the rate at 2.08 percent with no option, five years from now, the township decided it wanted to prepay because it had excess funds. And the rate at that time, to the maturity date of the note, which would be 2024, was higher than 2.08 percent, and the township could prepay with no penalty. If the rate, that five-year rate at that time were lower than 2.08 percent, then there would be a penalty that would be equal to the present value of the difference between the rates. And to avoid making anyone's eyes bleed, if, you know, normally, you know, for a loan longer than 10 years, we would strongly recommend an option. For a 10-year loan, it's possible that an economic refunding would work at some point, but it'd be late in the term of the loan. So I think the real issue is whether or not, you know, the township expects to have excess funds available for a prepayment. If you think it's unlikely, then I would just, you know, lay my ears back and do the 2.08 without an option. I think it's unlikely. At 2.08 percent, I've been in this business for 31 years, you know, that's one of the lowest interest rates I've seen, with the exception of last year when we got 1.62 percent, which was lower than PIB loan. I did let my eyes bleed, I did go over all these proposals, and some of them even, the ones that we didn't ask for, and we got one from Quakertown National Bank for five years, and I looked at that one at 2 percent, but you're basically paying, you're doubling up on the payments, so you're really losing your purchasing power. I boiled it down to really two proposals that I'm interested in, both are the Delaware Valley Regional Finance Authority proposals, and he gave us four proposals, and inside the four proposals, in his one proposal, there are four, and each one of those proposals has one, two, three proposals. So in essence, there's 12. Out of all of them, I boiled it down to two, and the two that I think are probably the most viable for us are the 2.08 percent fixed over, for the total amount of $1,012,000, which would finance our 2014 and our 2015 road resurfacing. Under that particular proposal, there is no need, given the amount of the liquid fuels allocations that we've estimated that we're going to receive over the next several years, there's absolutely no need for a transfer from the unrestricted capital reserve fund over to the liquid fuels fund to pay for this. So I'm recommending, I like this proposal better than the other one, although the other one does entice me because I tend to be a little bit of a risk taker, and it does, at 1.5 million, $1,518,000, at 2.08 percent over a 10-year period, does allow us to do three years of road work, our 2014, 2015, and 2016. But if, and I granted, when I did the estimates on liquid fuels allocations, I was a little bit conservative, so you may not have to actually transfer any money from the unrestricted capital reserve over to liquid fuels in order to do this proposal. But my experience with liquid fuels and the state's estimates have been that they're not always completely correct, so I did scale back my estimates, I utilized their formulas I utilized their formulas for the increases. But I did scale back their estimates a little bit to keep us within a safe range. So you may not have to spend anything in terms of transfer from the unrestricted capital reserve. But if you do, it would be two payments. One in the amount of $37,127 in 2015, while we waited for our liquid fuels allocations to catch up. And then another one in 2016 of $8,967 for a total of $46,094. But I'm recommending at this time that you go with the refinancing over, that would cover the 2014, 2015 road work in the amount of $1,012,000 at 2.08 percent over 10 years. And I think that's, I think that capitalizes it.
And that would be the end of my memo.
Well, I'll just back, I'll just back up a minute for our audience that maybe was not here the last time and discussed this. So we just talked about the four roads for 2014. But there are four other roads for 2015 that our engineer and the public works director is recommending. So those would include the remaining portion of Arcola Road that has, that we did not do from last year. Collegeville Road, and that would be from Township Line Road to River Road. Sunnyside Avenue, which is from Farmhouse Drive to Fifth. And Woodland, from Miami Avenue to Trooper. So that'd be the 2015 roads.
Can I jump in there for a second? Sorry to cut you off.
Yeah, no.
I thought that we had held discussion about changing out Arcola Road in 2015.
We did.
We can do that, not a problem.
Given the timeline, and sorry to those residents of Arcola Road, I know we just discussed that. But given the timeline for the bridge and the timeline for paving in the summer months, it wouldn't coincide with being able to do that so that there would still be heavy truck traffic on the road. So we talked about swapping out Arcola Road in 2015, pushing that to 2016, and I believe moving up Eagle Stream Drive into 2015.
We can move up Cold Spring and we can move up Eagle Stream that are both on the 2016. Yeah, and it really doesn't make any difference. It's basically almost an even swap. We estimate that Arcola costs $120,000. We estimate that Cold Springs is about $84,000. And although Eagle Stream is going to be much more expensive, it's going to be like $120,000. But I think we can certainly take Cold Spring, swap it out with Arcola. Or we just take Eagle Stream and swap it out.
One or the other. I mean, they're all in need, but just as bang for our buck and, you know, getting, doing it at the right time, moving Arcola into 2016.
Oh, the other thing that I forgot to mention in my little diatribe was if we get to the end of 2015, and I know that somebody will say, well, gee, Rich, why didn't you take advantage of the interest rate at 2.08 percent? And they'll remember this conversation in the year 2016. And they'll say, golly gee whiz, interest rate's now at 4 percent. And one of the retorts that we can make is, well, there is a PIB process. And we are eligible to take advantage of that. And that's a loan through the state, okay? That's a loan that you can generally get at 1.625 percent. Now, somebody's going to say, well, why don't we wait and just do this year's financing, then do next year under the PIB loan? Two reasons. One, we can invest the funds that we've got as long as we don't violate the arbitrage rules at 2.08 percent. We're probably going to be able to make at least about half a percent in terms of interest on the investment. The other reason is you have to apply for a PIB loan. It's not a guarantee. So under my scenario, with the financing for both the 2014 and 2015 roads, you've got a bird in the hand for this year and next year.
What would the timeline be for applying for the PIB loan to cover 2016?
The state has a different fiscal year than we have. And that's been the challenge the last few years. We haven't necessarily had authorization proceed with road projects until it was closer to the springtime, at which point the infrastructure bank had most of their funds committed to other projects that have been approved and are in the pipeline. So if we now know going forward that we're going to have a systematic road reconstruction project, you know, in dollars budgeted each year, now we can move forward in the earlier parts of 2015 and immediately get in the pipeline for the 2016 project. So we're there and just waiting for the check to come from the state.
Okay, because I would ask that that happened knowing that we're heading in this direction then. Thank you.
I have one more question for you, Rich. So in all your numbers juggling, so you did account for that $250,000 that we had budgeted for this year, which was not loaned, it was straight out of the general. Okay, so you took that off the top, okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, any other?
Is it for me?
Yeah. That is a good question. I don't, without the bids being awarded and knowing who the contractor will be and where they're going to be getting their supplies from and all that, maybe in, let's see, what, July? Maybe the end of July, early August, we might know that, right?
Yeah, we, with the meeting biweekly with Representative Verb, Colleen, myself, the chief, other municipal officials, along with the state and the county. And they are anticipating, although I have to go through regularly the routine every meeting, when are you going to bid it? Okay, when is the notice to proceed going to be issued? When are we going to have shovels in the ground? And every week, it's, you know, sort of like cross-examining the county and getting that information out of them. The purpose of these meetings has been not so much to determine where the heavy equipment will be during construction, but to move the initial process along so that we can reopen the bridge. But as we get closer to award and we've got everybody pulling in the same direction at the same speed that we want everybody to pull, I think that we can probably bring those other issues to the table.
It stands to reason it's going to impact both sides. To demolish the existing bridge and then to build the supports for the new bridge, it has to happen on both sides. So I don't think we can avoid that.
Our, just our section is a little bit more residential.
It is.
We'll be happy if we get a new bridge out of them. I think it usually comes down to whoever's roadway it is. It's their responsibility unless they did something to damage it, you know, other than normal wear and tear. And it's already in bad shape. So I'm not quite sure we'd win that argument, but. Okay, so we can move on then. So would someone like to entertain a motion to accept one of these financing proposals?
I'll make a motion to accept the financing at 2.08 percent from Dalval in the amount of $1,012,000 fixed to fund the road projects for the years 2014 and 15. With a, I'm sorry, with a 10-year term. And the only change I would ask be made, at least internally, is the move, moving Arcola Road for either Cold Spring or Eagle Stream in our documents.
I would second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Do you want that change to be noted in the minutes of moving Arcola as part of the motion?
Yes, I'd like it in there. Because we discussed it last time, and it's still in internal documents as, without the change, so I'd like it noted in there. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any last questions? Questions from the audience? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Okay, item 3D, discussion and consideration of Gannett and Fleming engineering proposal in connection with the middle interceptor. John, I believe you were given that proposal, so.
Correct. What you have in front of you is, as the board's aware, there is an ongoing dispute regarding the location of the middle interceptor. It's working its way through the administrative review process with DEP. Ultimately, it will come to this township. It may not be this year. It may be this year. It may not be till next year. But there's a lot of activity occurring involving administrative agencies, PHMC. And it's my recommendation that the township have its own sanitary sewer engineer oversee this and provide the township and this board with input because ultimately, you're going to have to make a decision. There's some facts, I think, that need to be developed regarding the scope of what's being proposed by the middle interceptor. So you have in front of you a Gannett Fleming proposal with hourly rates. I know there's been some discussion about making sure that this is not a blank check type of a situation. I have two specific tasks which we can discuss, I think, in executive session. We've discussed them previously, that Mr. Woyden has said he will give us a specific number on it. So I will take responsibility to make sure we get specific numbers, not to exceed, he's willing to do that. I think the first part of the agreement, paragraph one, states that we'll agree upon and define specific service or tasks to be provided. So there's a couple items that I would like him to do. And I'll keep the board informed as we go through this process and what those costs are. But, you know, some of what he will do will involve some, just some give and take with the agencies that are overseeing the planning and the approval of the middle interceptor. But there's a couple specific things that I'm going to ask him to do. And I will get a number not to exceed, inform the board of what that is. So this is, you know, in support of the positions that the township will need to take as this comes through and comes in front of you. Eventually, you will have a proposed resolution to approve or not approve, or even approve with conditions that will then go to DEP. So I don't know if the board has any questions about this. It's a fairly standard engineering professional services agreement with hourly rates, the engineers and the support staff, Gannett Fleming.
John, if I may, so my understanding is obviously the middle interceptor needs to be built. And the discussion now is where it's going to be built.
Correct.
And we're engaging this firm to help us review at least the three different options, review the proposals and the plans that are before them, the costs associated with each, and to give us information so that when we have to make a decision, we have some independent information to base that decision on.
Correct. Yeah, there's been three options, as I think every, I mean, this board certainly knows. And there's disagreement as to which option is the most feasible, the most cost-effective, the most environmentally effective and less destructive. So all those issues.
And architecturally, because of the Native American artifacts.
Archaeological, yeah.
Archaeological, sorry.
Yeah, there's some archaeological issues which are in dispute too. So, you know, I'm recommending that you approve this, you know, subject to the caveat that this is not a blank check to Gannett Fleming. There'll be some specific tasks that I think this board is going to need information on so that you can make an informed decision when it comes to you.
Okay, then, would someone like to make a motion to accept the Gannett Fleming engineering proposal?
I'd like to make the motion that we accept that proposal with the caveats John just enumerated.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions from board members? Questions from the audience on the motion? Yes.
Hi, Cathy. The only question I have is, I know that you said there's like three proposals for the interceptor. And I've been trying to file this closely over the years. From my viewpoint, there's only one proposal. If Upper Providence feels they need the interceptor, it should be on their side of the creek where there is less residential housing. And also, how, if they're talking about wanting to put in the interceptor and they're going to put in a new bridge, is that going to overlap somehow? Are they going to run into, you know, who's, are we going to have to delay the bridge so they could put in an interceptor? Or is this interceptor thing going to be going on for a while? Because I think the residents in Arcola Road have been through a lot. It's been really put upon by the local government, the county government, another township, even the state. And since I don't have sewer hookup, which I'm thankful for, the residents that do have the sewer in Lower Providence are going to be made to help pay for an interceptor they can't hook up to because Upper Providence needs it, because they've built up so much over the years. But I think three proposals is nice. But I think the main proposal would be, if they want it that bid, put it on their side of the creek. And at least for a change, leave Lower Providence alone and the residents that live here. Thank you.
I just appreciate anything that the board does to help the residents. And I know you've already done a lot. And I appreciate her comments. And I was going to actually add that when you were listing the reasons, the impacts, you know, the environmental. The residential impact seems to get left out a lot. We are a neighborhood. And we are a very quiet, peaceful neighborhood. And there's, you know, over 16 properties directly impacted, you know, that would be, or condemned. But we have lairs going more closer to the road there. So probably there's a good 30, I would say, like when you do the whole really impact. So we appreciate all that. And just a little update on the PHMC. Some of the residents, you know, we were unsure about letting them on our property to do the archaeological studies. And we have just approved that. But one good thing, I just want to say, is about our wall. That wall that has been kind of this big, beautiful wall that somehow got invisible. Well, through this, the beginning of part of this study, the wall is now getting attention. They said they have, now they have to address it. There was a gentleman down yesterday who examined the big chimney that was on the other side, too. We have this historic chimney. And he found a signature on the old stone, which is kind of, he has no idea what it means exactly. It was France non-salat or something like that. But he said it's really neat. I mean, that's not the words he used, but it's really rare, it's old, unique. So it's just one more thing that is, you know, that could be lost in. So I just wanted to bring that up. All right, thank you.
Thank you for the update, Cathy. Just please, now that the board continues to work on this issue pretty continuously, there's some things that we don't really speak about because it potentially will be a legal issue. So we're doing our best, just so you know that. All right, so with that, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll be abstaining from that vote.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Okay, thank you, Joe. And, oh, no votes, one abstention. Okay, moving on. Item 3E, authorization to add Richard Gestrich as an authorized person on the Morgan Stanley Barney Administered Pension and Post Retirement Medical Benefits Fund.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Currently, the township has a resolution in place that names the township manager as a chief administrative officer of our township pension plan. Additionally, I think we're all aware that Morgan Stanley had some changes within, with the team that administered our plan, so they have new procedures in place. They are requiring an additional designation for Mr. Gestrich, and that would be that of an authorized person. So the resolution that you have in your packet is their in-house resolution. It has been reviewed by our solicitor, and he has approved it. And we're, I'm asking if the board would please appoint Mr. Richard Gestrich as an authorized person to transact business. It gets through the compliance department at Morgan Stanley, and it makes them happy.
Sure.
But his role will not change, but they will be now willing to accept full direction from Mr. Gestrich.
No paying reasons.
Okay, could we have a motion to authorize adding of Richard Gestrich as an authorized person?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jason. Your motion, we have a second.
I would second.
Oh, boy. Motion and second. Any questions? Questions from the audience? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carried. Moving on, item four, announcements. Meetings coming up in the township. The Park and Recreation Board will have their meeting on June 10th here at the Township Building at 7:00 PM. The Sewer Authority will conduct their meeting on June 11th at 7:30. And the Library Board of Trustees have their meetings over in the library. That will be held on June 16th at 7:00 PM. And you're going to start hearing this constant reminder. Our Independence Day celebration has been adjusted. The date will now be on July 3rd. The concert will begin at 6:30, and the fireworks will follow as it gets dark. And I think Patrick will probably elaborate on that in a little, but that's it for the announcements, comments, and other business.
Thank you, Colleen. First of all, as the liaison to the Parks and Rec Board, I attended the meeting on May 13th. There was a presentation at the meeting by the Mathaken United Youth Soccer Club, as well as the Mathaken Warriors Pop Warner Football. Their presentations dealt with their leases of the fields, respectively, the Redtail Soccer Field and the football field out front here. They made presentations as to the improvements they made because their leases are now up, and they are going back to the Parks and Rec Board to try to renew their leases. The Parks and Rec Board has a meeting this upcoming Tuesday on the 10th where they'll be discussing the proposals and what they want to do, and then they'll be making some recommendations to us at the next meeting. With respect to Camp Perkiomi, Carl has told me that there are still a few spots in the Little Perkiomi camp that is for children that are ages four and five. The camp is Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 12:00. It's here at the Township Building, and there's three different sessions from June 16th through August 1st. So if you have any four- or five-year-olds here in the township and you're looking for them to have an activity for a couple hours in the morning, it's a great, it's a great camp, and you should bring them out. With respect to the golf course, we had the drawings for the 50 golf certificates that were provided by Audubon Land Development, who operates the golf course. And those 50 winners came, were drawn from, I think, over, I want to say there was close to 150 or 160 entrants, but I'm not exactly sure of the number. So it was a great turnout for, you know, people interested in golfing, and those certificates are out. With respect to the fireworks, I have gotten some questions from residents as to why the fireworks celebration, the Independence Celebration is on July 3rd as opposed to July 4th. I did some research as the decision was made prior to me coming onto the board, but there was some vendor difficulty last year where our prior long-term vendor had sold his business, and then something happened where he came back on and honored the contract last year, but he didn't have insurance, and there were some insurance difficulties last year. And quite frankly, the presentation wasn't up to our par, and we needed to get a new vendor, and we couldn't find a new vendor that didn't already have a contract for July 4th, so it had to be on July 3rd this year. But we are looking into new vendors for next year to get it back on July 4th. So for all those folks that we're hoping to have and planning on the celebration being on the 4th as in past years, we understand your concerns. There were some problems, you know, outside of our control, and we are moving to get it back on the 4th in future years. So it will return to the 4th, hopefully. I just wanted to remind everyone, and for those at home won't see this before it's over, but the Lower Providence Fireman's Fair is continuing on, goes through Saturday evening, so please go out and support the fair. Last Wednesday evening, I think it was in May 28th, Jill and I attended the Planning Commission meeting here before the Planning Commission was proposed by Prenair Bread down at the Audubon Square Shopping Center to put in a drive-through behind. There was some information exchanged, and ultimately, the presentation got tabled, and it's going to come back at a future Planning Commission meeting. So no determination was made, or it's going to, it's going to come back to the board. My apologies. It's going to come back to the board for approval or disapproval after some consideration of the application for the drive-through. It'll be on, it'll be on the next agenda here?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Mike, do you have anything to add?
I guess there were a fair amount of considerations that were taken in this session, and so the community officials, the public, yes, there were a number of considerations that were taken. And we have that possibility that the city first policy is playing a different part of the problem, and that's served, that it impacted the community.
Have you been able to talk to the applicant? Will they be able to be present for that meeting?
I haven't been able to confirm for the next meeting, it'll be the 25th. I'm still waiting to hear back.
Okay. Okay, we'll take under advisement, and we'll direct them to the best course so that we can get this resolved quickly for them and through the process. Thank you, Mike. Any other comments?
I would just like to ask, John, where do we stand on the chipping?
We'll be done far, but no breakdowns will be...
Okay.
Outstanding.
Great.
Thank you very much. Well done.
Thanks.
We'll have fireworks when you're finished. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. We do appreciate the dedication of the Public Works guys. They've had a rough spring, they really have, and have gone above and beyond, and we appreciate our residents' patience with that process of chipping. They certainly have been out there diligently trying to get through every street, and it's great to hear that you're finally, finally close to the end. One item we had since our last meeting was a terrible Pennsylvania water crisis, and so I think thanks should be in order to all those that helped, especially the fire company with pumping through the night and through the day and getting that water tank filled back up again. I think that helped to bring the water pressure back to acceptable uses. I luckily was not affected, but I know some board members were, and we were right there, and township staff were doing our best to make sure the public was notified as to what was happening and to get it addressed as quickly as possible within our means, sort of beyond our control, but we do appreciate that work. And I have a nice story to relay. Chief Carol, I just heard this today, so you can pass it on to your Officer Richard Aston. And he was on a car stop in one of our residential neighborhoods doing some speed enforcement, I believe, and once he was done clearing the car stop, he approached one of the residents that had been, is an elderly resident, who had been kind of carrying his bags in and out of his car. And so this resident felt the need to relay the experience to me and how impressed he was with Officer Aston's just kindness, and he knew his name, and he was just very taken back with his sincerity. And the time that he spent, they had a nice, long conversation. I don't know what they discussed, but it's a wonderful example of community policing, and I know that your officers are doing that every day, but it's nice to hear when somebody really does appreciate it, so please pass it on. Okay, so we'll go to courtesy of the floor. Any residents? Yes, Candy.
Candy Alaba-Iglesville. Regardless of chipping, my husband asked whether to relay a message. They came out today on Eagleville Road. They were out yesterday, and they had to stop about 2:30, quarter, 3:00 because school was starting to get out, and it's a little hard to navigate on Eagleville Road when there's traffic. They came out today to chip in front of our home. We had a pile on each side of the driveway. We had a very large pile because we have a little under five acres. My husband, who is disabled now unfortunately, spent a lot of days dragging down what needed to be chipped. He knew exactly what needed to be done. It's been there so long that the grass and the weeds have grown around it. Well, when they left, they left a lot of the branches behind, the smaller pieces. And my husband was very upset because now he has to go down there and try to gather up what was left that should have been chipped so he doesn't run over it with the tractor and break our tractor. And when I said, "He's coming here tonight," he goes, "You need to ask somebody why they left a lot of the twigs and branches on the property." He says, "It's going to take me a couple days now to clean this up." And I mean, I understand it was hard for him because we're on a hill. We have no curb, we have no sidewalk, we're a hill right up against the road. But for him to get upset about it, I was a little worried because he said, "Now I gotta..." And he's more concerned about running over a piece of the branch and breaking a tractor that we can't afford to replace right now. So he was just, I mean, his comment was, "Well, what do you expect, our township workers?" That's what he said. He was upset when he came in and saw what they left because he didn't see it right away because all the grass that's grown around the branches. I mean, what they did was nice, but he didn't know why they left the smaller pieces there. 4039 Eagleville Road. We're right across the street from the only sidewalk on Eagleville Road. We're a blue house. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'll tell my husband when he goes home, so he'll be happy.
Thank you, Candy.
Thank you, John.
Yes?
Harold Burton, 153 Summit Avenue. The end of our driveway, we've got a couple holes. The road's just deteriorated there. And I realize 220 Summit Avenue, which is next door, it's still private there. It's not part of township, but up to our property line at the end of the driveway is township property, and we've got two big holes there that, you know, is really rocking the cars as we go in and out to see if something can be fixed there.
You're on the same side as the school, your driveway?
We're past the school.
You're past the school, but you're, when I go down Summit, you're on the same side as the school?
Yes, yes.
John, could you put that on your list of things?
153. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. All these faces, my goodness. Hi, George.
Hi, George Ozerowski, 2012 Waterfall Circle. Apologize, I just came from a soccer field, so I'm not dressed. You probably know, if you're familiar with Waterfall Circle, it's down off of Level, off of Yurkeyes, kind of along the Perkiomi. About four-ish years ago, the township gave a, I guess, some type of an easement to the Sewer Authority, put a pumping station in off of Waterfall, and they got a curb cut put in there, and then they put a bunch of stone that goes to the pumping station. And there's really no signage, but we've been having a problem, and the police were out there on Sunday a couple times. People drive their cars back there, especially four-wheel-drive vehicles, and it's not marked, and it doesn't say, you know, no trespassing. There's no, like, ballards or chains up there that would prevent anyone from driving back there. It's not a road, it's your property, it's the township's property. Is there anything we can do about that? Because as I said, these strange people come in, and they don't belong in our neighborhood, and they drive back in there, and the police went to look for them, and they leave their vehicles. They go, I don't know where they go, but they go somewhere. And then, you know, a couple hours later, they drive back, and they kind of come and go, like, different hours of the day, night sometimes either. So I don't know if that's something that, I know it's their easement, but it's your property, so I don't know what you can do about it. Maybe even talk to them about putting a chain up of some type, if that's possible.
Sure we can look into it, doing something with the chief's recommendation.
Appreciate that, thanks.
Thanks for bringing that into our attention.
Yeah, I think that's...
Okay, if that's, if that's all, we'll call for adjournment. We're actually going to go back into executive session, but we will adjourn. We have some things we didn't finish talking about, so could we have a motion to adjourn and go back into exec session?
I would make the motion.
Have a motion and a second?
I would second it.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? None.